Okay, I'm gonna call the media to order and Mr. Manager, the floor is yours.
Sure.
One, two, three, four, five.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. In a correspondence that I gave to council a couple of weeks ago, I indicated that we would have the cut from the two consultances related to the waterside proposals by this time. As you may recall, we were to get those proposals at the end of, the middle of March, but the consultants needed additional time. I can tell you that I received the updated copies yesterday, and so this is real time, as much real time as we can get. The final recommendation is still earmarked for the end of this month, but we wanted to make sure that you had as much information as the administration has right now in terms of an update. So with that said, we do have information from the two consultant reports. What's important is that I'm not gonna give you a recommendation today about waterside, just the information related to the two consultant reports. And again, as I've said in the past, as we start to go through this process, we could get to a situation where we recommend one proposal, we could recommend a combination of two proposals, or we could have a recommendation not to go forward with either. With that said, there's no action that's required of council at this time. As opposed to going through a laundry list of, or a timeline related to the waterside, which we go back to the early 80s, I just wanna focus on the fall of 2010 till today. There were two key issues that occurred during that time. We had in the fall of 2010, we had a survey of about 3,000 residents, and then that survey, basically, the outcome suggested several things that it seemed like the community was interested in as related to waterside. Whether it was a mixed use, whether it's restaurants only, entertainment only, a farmer's type market, a marina, or a marketplace, those were some of the different proposals that came up. What's important, we also at that same time had an advisory panel with five independent consultants, and the outcome of that was basically two key takeaways. One, that the private sector should manage the waterside, and secondly, that any future plans for the waterside should be part of a bigger strategic plan for the entire waterfront. If we fast forward to last September at the council retreat, one of the things that I recommended to the council at that time was to go forward with an RFP. We went forward with that RFP, it was basically for a private company to manage and redevelop the waterside, but it was very open. So in other words, we basically said, we have the strategy, we're looking from the entire waterfront, and what could you do? With that said, the RFP went out in mid-October, we received the responses in mid-December, we sent the RFP to 63 different developers, and we had received five proposals. I think you will recall, the five proposals ranged from the Beach Music Proposal all the way to the Cordish Proposal. I think what's important is to just go back to the January timeframe, just to bring you back up to speed, is that we provided you with a staff presentation on January 24th. From that point, we explained to you the different five proposals. We actually had a public meeting on the March 6th with the two finalists, if you will, the Harvey Lindsey Development Proposal and the Cordish Companies Proposal. And at that point, after that presentation, we were going to get information from the consultants, two separate consultants. One firm that was looking at the Harvey Lindsey Development, another firm looking at the Cordish Companies Development. And again, we received that information yesterday. With that said, what I'm gonna do is literally just go over at a high level some of the findings and recommendations from the proposals. It's not going to be something that's a blow-by-blow, they're pretty extensive. They will be in your Dropbox at 5:00. We're also gonna post them online at 5:00, so everybody will have an opportunity to look at and go through the proposals. I think what's important is if I just start off, and let's just focus on the Harvey Lindsey Development Proposal. You may recall, it's a waterfront conference center, 30,000 square feet of exhibit space, another 23,000 square feet of ballroom space, and there's also some breakout meeting space with that. There's a multi-level pedestrian walkway, there's also two mid-sized hotels, a new office building, an expanded arena, and one of the key components to set the waterside facility would be taken down. I think it's important to also tell you at this time that as we talked with the consultants, we also had the opportunities for both of the proposers to talk to the consultants also. So some of the information that you're gonna receive tonight, they basically have a two-to-three week lead on some of the issues that popped up during these discussions. The Cordish Company Proposal, which has been considered waterside live, it's a mixture of restaurants and entertainment opportunities. The key is that the structure would stay in place, there would be some reworking, some updating, and the concept has been that that would be similar to the living room of the city. Okay, so fast forward to what we have as of yesterday, both consultants have suggested that either project will work. So in other words, we have one consultant that looked at the conference center proposal, one consultant that looked at the Cordish Proposal. In each case, they said that the proposals would work and could have a positive impact on Norfolk. So what I'll do is just go through each one of the proposals, and I'm sure that I can do this in less than 15 minutes. If we go to the Harvey Lindsey Development Analysis, we had the Strategic Advisory Group, or SAG. Basically, this is a national consulting firm, they've advised more than 250 projects worldwide in 150 cities. They actually did the original evaluation back in 2004 when there was a discussion about a hotel conference center in the city. Basically, what they've been able to do is update the 2004 study. They wanted to do a few things, they wanted to see were there any changes, any relevant changes since 2004. They wanted to confirm the size of the new facility, they wanted to also look at how the Harvey Lindsey Development would fulfill any of the market needs, and then lastly, what alterations, if any, should be considered. It's really two steps. For the update, they started with the 2004 study. And back at that time, in 2004, basically, the city identified goals, the consultant examined the state of the industry, and then lastly, they conducted over a survey of 100 meeting planners. So in other words, these are the individuals that are trying to put heads in beds and find destinations that the different communities would find desirable. The second part of this update was to really look at the industry, community attributes, and any competitive facilities that we should take into consideration. If we go back to 2004, some of the objectives, and I think it's extremely important to go back to 2004, the starting point, there was this general consensus that Norfolk could enjoy this competitive advantage by targeting small and medium-sized conventions and conferences, generally those that flock to large hotels or small convention centers. One of the key was that the conference center hotel and meeting space could host large groups, and those large groups could stay in multiple hotels. One of the key issues there was that Norfolk should not try to compete against the larger convention centers, and that is the starting point. I will say that back in the 2004 study, they had a market-driven facility. So in other words, this market-driven facility that could work in Norfolk would have about 105,000 square feet. That would be exhibit space of about 60,000 square feet, ballroom of 30,000 square feet, and breakout and meeting room space of 15,000 square feet. So again, that was a market-driven analysis. As we went through the process back in 2004, there were other alternatives, because that alternative at the time did not seem feasible. Some of the sites that were reviewed back in 2004 were the Waterside Garage, and for a number of issues, including cost, that was a site that was not considered. From that point, the northeast corner of Main and Granby was a site that the consultant started to consider. And they said, if you couldn't go with this 105,000 square feet of space, there were some alternatives. Anything from having an alternative 2A where you would have two 30,000 square foot ballrooms stacked on top of each other, all the way down to alternative 2C, which was one 20,000 square foot ballroom and 12,000 square feet of breakout space. One alternative was to do nothing. But I will tell you that since 2004, up until today, one of the issues, or one of the focuses, a focus has been that alternative 2C. To what extent could you do something on that site that was less than this 105,000 square feet? At many, at times, the discussion was closer to 50,000 square feet when you talk about a ballroom, a junior ballroom, some big breakout space. So they used that as an update, and they basically, SAG, the report that you'll see, indicates that everything is reasonable based on what happened in 2004. One of the, two of the keys is that Norfolk should not try to compete at a national level with the large exhibits and conferences, and we should focus more so on those niche conferences. The industry update, some of the keys there is that the top choices for events are city hotels, and some of the smaller corporate and association meetings have grown since 2004, again, a bigger demand there. The community attributes, the update there, one of the keys is that the level has changed since 2004 when you look at the number of hotel rooms, especially downtown. You have 160-room suite residents in that opened in 2009, that's the major difference. In the facilities update, back in 2004, there was consideration for the convention center in Hampton and the convention center in Virginia Beach. Virginia Beach has a total of over 200,000 square feet. Hampton is closer, I believe, to 138,000 square feet. So again, in that 2004 study, and even with the update, the concept has been, don't compete with those larger venues. Some of the strengths of the Harvey Lindsey Proposal were the site size, the site location, marketability, and support of existing hotels. Some of the concerns, I think the main concern, has been that the new conference center should not be separated from the hotel facility. So in other words, you would have a standalone, shouldn't have a standalone conference center, the recommendation would be that the hotel should be a part of the conference center. One of the concerns is that, as you start to look at these nationwide, that many times a local subsidy may be needed. With that said, I'll go to the Cordish Proposal. Basically, we had the Huntley Partners to take a look at the Cordish Proposal to see whether or not that is something that would be doable here in Norfolk. Again, as I mentioned earlier, both consultants did say that both proposals would seem that they could have a positive impact on the city. In terms of the Cordish Proposal, Dana Nottingham, who is the principal analyst here, who's had experience with waterside from the beginning, and even the repositioning of waterside, teamed up with the blunt Hunter Retail and Research Group to basically see to what extent would the Cordish Proposal work. The Huntley Partners, basically, they reviewed the proposal and the potential impacts on downtown, and they came up with an opinion of the potential impacts and rationale for that opinion. So what's the approach? The approach was basically, what would the potential impact of the Cordish Proposal be if it was awarded? There was a strategic analysis, market research, qualitative research, market review, and even a stakeholder input. Some of the selected questions, I think that's important, is they really started off with, what's the waterfront strategy? If you go back to the 2010 consultant reports, the report would basically indicate two things. One is that waterside would be better off in the hands of the private sector, but the other point was, to what extent is that gonna be built into the entire waterfront strategy? So that was one of the starting points for the Huntley Group. One of the keys was not to just focus on the waterfront, but is there this opportunity that the waterfront could also assist with Granby Street, MacArthur Mall, and even the conference center, if that's something that the city would like to do? Some of the selected findings, outside of that, the strategy is very important for us as we move forward. One of the issues was that, and you'll see it later in this report, that there's been a declining market share of the food and beverage industry here in Norfolk. So one of the keys was, how can you reverse that declining market share? There appears to be a market demand that exists within the region that Norfolk could reverse that trend, and it could be something that would be beneficial not just to that waterside site, but for the entire community. The research findings really two-fold. One was, how can you find a successful catalyst project? And then could that successful catalyst project, with some joint marketing, provide for a better result for the community? One of the keys is that the consultant said is that one strategy by itself, or one project by itself, and I'll use their terms, will not constitute a silver bullet, but instead it could be a catalyst, and as long as there's cross-marketing, and as long as it's tied into a strategy for the entire waterfront and downtown, that we could have good results. The consultant's opinion is that if the Cordish Project was, is integrated into a broader downtown cross-programming, cross-marketing opportunity, it's reasonable to assume a positive impact. Some of the keys is that positive impact could be on downtown restaurants, could also enhance the city's ability to increase the regional restaurant share. And then lastly, one of the points was basically, the consultant said that if this strategy is identified, and used for an example, to have a strategy to create Virginia's premier urban waterfront park, which would extend from Harvard Park all the way down to Townpoint Park, that everything should be built on the strategy. Whatever the decision is, build it on the strategy. Some of the key interviews, there were interviews with a number of local restaurants. The local restaurants, some of the key conclusions were that the operators believed that the downtown needs to penetrate that regional market, that also that the downtown cannot survive without having, without serving that regional audience and having that draw of going outside of just Norfolk. Some of the out-town interviews, which included some of the communities where the Cordish Companies have projects, Louisville, Kansas City, Baltimore, Houston, for the most part there was a consistent theme that there was a broader revitalization impacts, leasing and local restaurant impacts were positive, the contributions to joint and cross-marketing were key, and one of the big keys was to what extent in these developments were the management and crowd control taken into account. So those were the questions I think you'll find very useful as you go through. As I wind it up, basically, when we started to look at the local advisor, there were some issues and some questions that were brought up, and that is, what is the overall state of Norfolk's restaurant market? And to what extent could you have a project like the Cordish Project that didn't cannibalize some of the existing restaurants? I think there are two key slides here. One is if you look at the Norfolk's restaurant share. Basically, when you go back into 2000, 2001, you can see a peak.
Is that the whole city broken?
This is, this is focused on sales tax, yes, sir, for the city, yes. Yes. So when you start to look at, yes, when you start to look at the market share, peaking closer to 27.5, almost 28% back in 2001, down to about 22% in 2005. So clearly, sales can increase, but sales can increase because the costs of goods go up. So although we've seen sales increase, we've seen our market share decrease.
What about sales increasing being related to the fact that more people are eating out?
Sure, sure.
I mean, you know what I mean, if there are, I mean, we're still doing well and maybe doing better, I mean, each restaurant may be doing better than the year before, but it's just that the market share is less because more people are eating out and they're diversifying throughout the year.
That's exactly right. So one of the points that you'll find in the Huntley Proposal is, how do you create some environment where you're getting people who do not live in Norfolk to come to Norfolk to eat, okay, or for entertainment? So basically, if you go to the next slide, another telling slide, is that if you start to look at not just this declining market share, but a projection out, so if you had the status quo model, so in other words, if you didn't have a catalyst that came in, the concept could be in the status quo model that instead of being at 22.5% of the market share, you could be down to almost 20%, 20% of the market share by 2020. So again, the data-driven piece of this related more to the market share and how can you reclaim some parts, part of that portion of, reclaim some portion of that market share. The consultant identified strengths, the impact on the Cordish Proposal was positive, and it could be this regional draw. Moving forward, we intend to give you a recommendation on the 24th. Again, the recommendation could be one project, a combination of both projects, or neither proposal. And what's key is that once we do that, we would go into exclusive negotiations with whoever the developer will be. So again, the concept today was just, I didn't want to have two consultant reports on my desk for two weeks and then give you a presentation. We have the reports, not only, I think it's 5:00, not only do you have them, but now they should be on the website so that the public can see that the reports, and they're pretty comprehensive. I don't think I gave them justice with just a 20-minute overview, but I believe it does give you a starting point to start to digest what's in the reports.
Marcus, the process has been very open so far. On the 24th, when you make whatever recommendation that you're gonna make, what opportunity is there gonna be for the public to comment? Have you thought that out?
Sure. Again, I would, it would just be a recommendation, a recommendation to the council. I don't believe we would immediately start anything based on that recommendation.
The council's gonna have, they're gonna wanna test it, for sure, and they're gonna wanna talk about it.
Right.
And then have, you know, and then, I guess, talk with you. I mean, maybe with the council, I mean, would you expect to have a public hearing or a town hall meeting, or what would you, how would you guys, there's gonna be?
We need to get the input at that time from the public.
And both consultants have suggested that they would, they would even be here today, but I thought that just to roll it out, we would need consultants here.
I'm a little perplexed as it, I mean, just listening to, listening to what the manager just said, I mean, he just basically told us everything we needed to know. He just said that the consultant, SAG, well, said that a standalone conference center does not work, it needs to be co-located with a hotel. So then, the other, taking that data, that would, that would suggest that if you went with that one on the waterfront, then you would have to co-locate a hotel with it. So that changes that proposal. The, you know, we had already had, had talked about a hotel, a full-service hotel slash conference space on the Main Street side, we've been trying to get that done for the last seven, eight years.
Longer than that.
That's nothing new.
Twenty years.
I haven't heard anything today, you know, that I, that I, that I thought we, that I thought that we weren't working on or trying to accomplish. I thought that was the whole purpose of taking down historical buildings and doing just that on that particular site. But to me, again, that site was not a part of the RFP that went out. And, you know, so to tell me that hadn't really told me anything. And then take an RFP for waterside to tell me what we have been trying to do on the site on Main Street for quite some time. So, I mean, why do we continue to just to prolong this? You know, you go back to the community and tell them what again? You know, either we gonna move forward and do something, or we not? You know, that's why we, we, we've been dealing with this thing almost, what, a year, two years now? Before you got here, we were dealing with this waterside issue, what we're gonna do with the building. So I think time is due, and due is time, we need to move forward. But I don't think, just by listening to what you said today, you're gonna tell me anything different the 24th. I could pretty much figure out where you're going. I think anybody else that has heard this presentation could figure it out. If you can't, I, I'm something wrong.
I disagree. I actually think I heard Marcus say that some, that it might be one or the other, a combination. And so I think that there's still work to be done, and I think that, I understand what you're saying, but I think that the process he's laid out is great, and I, the issue now is, as Paul said, I'd vote for the public hearing.
That's fine, but I have to say, at the end of the day, we've already said we were gonna build a full-service hotel with conference space on the Main Street side. Has that changed?
But I do think that this was prudent, because that was based on what we had heard from a 2004 study. And so my interest, and I voiced to Marcus, which I think many of us did, that I wanted to make sure that that, those findings were still consistent with the times, because we hear a lot about that conventions are decreasing, or, you know, that the need isn't there. So this actually was good, I thought. So, I mean, I understand what you're saying as far as the fact that some of these findings, you know, but I, I am in favor of exactly the timeline we're on.
I just figured, I mean, we're gonna do the hotel conference center regardless. I mean, that was what we've been working on for the longest time, that's what we promised to people, and that's what we were committed to.
We might have changed our mind if we found out that conventions weren't as necessary or as good of idea for us.
That's why we chose the size of the conference space that we did, instead of a convention center, we chose conference space.
My question was, one of the reports gave pros and cons. The SAG report seemed to only say pros. Were there any cons for the Cordish?
I think the biggest con would be not universally all of the restaurant owners on Granby Street thought that the Cordish Proposal is a great proposal.
Well, I've already met with six civic leagues since we had the waterside meeting, and I got the same message from all six civic leagues when I talked about waterside. And my concern would be with doing a public hearing, and I'm all for doing a public hearing, is the perception that is already out in the community about the proposals, and that it will be people coming with the assumption that we have already decided that we're gonna subsidize a convention center at $76 million, because that's what I've heard at the civic leagues that I've talked to, is that there is a belief that the decision has already been made, mainly off of the article that ran on the front page of the newspaper before any of the other proposals had a chance to be vetted or put out there. And so I would hope that if we did a public hearing, that as much information as possible, and not just on the website, was given and sent to civic league presidents to get out to their members in time to make sure that the proper information is getting to us, because I don't want to sit at a public hearing where every single speaker gets up and tells us that they, this is another mistake for the city of Norfolk, when we're trying to make a very important decision here, and I want them to know the facts and base their comments based off of the facts, not off of an opinion that is out in the community. But I've already heard from my constituents which way to go with this, but I would like to hear other parts of the city.
But I think Marcus and the administration has given those facts. We can't explain when, you know, one story gets out in the press and some people jump on that.
Well, I understand that.
I mean, I think in fairness, I think Marcus has done that, and I think he will continue to do that.
I've never seen the RFP proposals that have come in, and I don't know if anybody's seen them, but I've only based the $76 million subsidy off of a newspaper article. It has never been presented in any presentation that I've seen that that's what Harvey Lindsey has asked for from the city.
You did it at Waterside, that's what I said.
Well, I left early, but I looked at the presentation, but I didn't see.
No, no, Tommy, it's totally there. It was totally there, I had a presentation.
I wanna make the difference between conference space and convention center.
Right.
We've always talked about conference space. I mean, that's what we shared with the community some time ago. Convention center, own another ballgame. You know, freestanding facility, own another ballgame. You know, like I said, I've always, you know, for the last seven, eight years that we've been working on that particular site, it was always envisioned, you know, for a full-service hotel conference space, understanding that we, and the study was done then, that we were not gonna try to compete with the big cities convention, we weren't gonna compete with Virginia Beach or Hampton, that we were trying to carve out our own niche to accommodate the space that we had to bring the small and mid-sized conventions and conferences to the city of Norfolk, because the Marriott Ballroom that we own there wasn't big enough. And so that was always on the table, so again, to me, the only other question is whether or not the Cordish Group project is conducive or it's not.
Well, I think we're all sort of saying, maybe we're not the same thing, it's pretty close. So we got two weeks to let the manager come in here, this is what, this is the process that we all bought into some time ago, that he would be in here on the, on the 24th, and once we get the proposal, we can then take up how we're gonna talk to the public about it, and we'll decide then if we need to just move forward right away.
Are we, are we voting, or we're gonna, I mean, how does, you're gonna bring a recommendation to us? And once we get that recommendation, is it then at that point that we will decide from a consensus basis, or would there be a formal vote, or how will we make the determination as relates to whether he brings in two, one, or none?
Well, it's a little tricky, because there's a fine line there, because he's still gonna want to have some, some leverage in his pocket if he goes to negotiate with somebody about what we think is doable or not. So some of this may have to be done in a closed, closed meeting with us, and, but some of it can obviously be done in public. I'm not suggesting closed meetings, God knows, I'm not, but I mean, in order to give the manager some direction without giving away all our cards, we have to have some of those conversations, that's all, that's all. That's all. I mean, once he makes his proposal, we can find a consensus, and it looks like this is the way we want to go forward, then we can try to, you know, give him, he will have some boundaries in which we are comfortable, with which he can move to try to strike a deal.
The timeline for this, would you prefer after the budget process? Because do we need this on top of everything else that's going to be coming on with the budget? Or are you looking to do this around the same time as the budget?
Time is great, but I feel that we've moved it back a couple times, and we'll be ready. Thank you.
The misconceptions of Tommy are out, you know. Wherever you go, they got us giving 200 million, 250 million. We need to, we need to get this thing, it's all over the place.
So we're not voting?
I didn't say that. The council may want to, you know, give the manager some real, you know, sharp direction, depending on what he recommends. There's a certain amount of money, I think, that we would, we want to know what the basis of the deal looks like, so he could, we could give him enough guidance, where he could go ahead, go out and say, all right, this is the deal we want, but this is, we want you to modify your proposal to do this, this, and this. That's all.
But at the end of the day, we don't, I read, the reason I asked that, I said, we have to have a vote. Regardless, the leverage is not taken away, because at the end of the day, if it gets too absorbent, we can walk away. We can go back to the drawing board. So again, I'm just asking, is this formal body going to take a vote? He's going to bring a recommendation back, you know, A, B, or C, and we're going to weigh in and say, A, I like A, four to four, or five to three, or whatever. I'm just trying to understand this process.
Wouldn't we just give him direction based on our discussion, and if it got to be very, you know, big agreement, then we'd have to vote on it? But I would say, we would listen to him, give him our opinions. If there's a big difference, then we might have to go to vote, otherwise he could proceed based on consensus.
He's going to come up with an idea for us, and then we're going to all say yay or nay on that idea.
I just want to understand the process, because I don't want, I'm not going to give a nay and come back in here like last time. I'm not going to do an $800,000 nod and come back in here. For example, when we did the land, we gave the ability to negotiate, okay? And so that was considered that we gave our...
We did. We gave him the ability to take our word as a counsel and make a decision.
Exactly. So what I'm saying is, you know, how much more information are we going to have to be able to make an informed decision if we're going to take a formal vote on which project that we're going to support? That's all I'm asking, is it's going to be, is he going to bring a recommendation in, and are we going to determine the recommendation, whether we like it or not, from a vote, or is the manager going to come in with a recommendation? But at the end of the day, he's going to go back inside.
Are we going to vote two weeks for what we're doing?
No, that's not what I just said. He's going to come back in here with a recommendation at some point after that recommendation. What I'm asking is, is this body going to take a formal vote?
And after he's gotten to a project which he says, I think this is the one we should take? I mean, I've got a deal that I think that the city should accept, that we will vote on.
Okay, so at that point, he would have come back in with all of the numbers.
Right.
Right, so that's what I just said. So that way, we don't have to make a decision without Marcus coming in and having all the numbers and telling us what this is going to cost the citizens of the city.
I understand, but if you're backing up to the Chick-fil-A, he gave us all the numbers.
We don't need to get into that.
I mean, that's where he's headed.
No, no, I'm not done with that. I'm just saying, I just want to have all of the information on the table.
We had the information when we all...
We will have to vote at the, once he makes a final decision, okay, any deal.
Bottom line.
Okay.
I think we know where you're headed.
All right. Yeah, we're going to go, we're going to break, and for the folks who are here, Marcus is leaving, he's got some business with the Community Services Board, he'll be back in just a few minutes. We're going to break for dinner, and we're going to take a little while, and then Marcus, if you're taking a little longer, we'll just start with the council interests. Okay?
Thank you.
All right?
You know what, how do we know?
We know how you feel.
I think he might have said it.